Doesn't agree with Verizon. Uh, no, it doesn't. I'd like to call the, the August 6th meeting of the Hamilton County Council to order. Mr. Auditor may have a roll call, please.
Ken Alexander.
Present.
Brad Beaver.
Here.
Tim Griffin.
Here.
Sue Mackey.
Present.
Amy Masalomani.
Present.
Steve Nation.
Present.
Mark Hall.
Here.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Next, we have invocation and purge of allegiance by Ken Alexander.
In the power heads, Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon this council and those who hold public office in the federal, state, and local government, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose that they may faithfully serve in their offices and promote the well-being of all their people through Jesus Christ over.
Amen.
I present my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I'd like to open a public hearing for ordinance number CC 0806 2025.C. Ordnance of Hamilton County issuing of general obligation bonds. Have some speakers ready to address this issue.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President, members of the council, community members. My name is Max Adams with the Attorney with the Law from Barnes in Thornburg. Serving as bond counsel for the 2025B general obligation bonds. I understand the county has two series of general obligation bonds going on right now. I'm serving as bond counsel for the B series as well as the hospital association bonds. This evening, we have a public hearing. It's going to be one of two public hearings related to the 2025B general obligation bonds. For general obligation bonds over a certain size, state law requires you to hold two public hearings before you move forward with the process. So this will be one of two. We'll be back here for your September meeting for that second public hearing as well as the resolution. I'll note that this was properly noticed in the papers for both meetings, so we're good there. The ordinance we have as part of this public hearing, part of this general obligation process, is an ordinance to issue general obligation bonds in amount not to exceed $23 million. This is for, to purchase certain real estate currently owned by River View Hospital so that they can take those sale proceeds for, to retire existing debt and to provide some working capital for River View. I know you're all very aware with the situation of River View, so I won't belabor the point, but I'm happy to answer any questions about preliminary determination process as well as the general obligation bonds.
Anyone have any questions?
Now, this is not to exceed, and we'll know the final number when we get the appraisal.
Uh, yes, that's my understanding. We'll size the bonds accordingly once we get those appraisals in.
What is the ordinance number that you're commenting on?
On the agenda I have is CC 0806 2025C, maybe?
Okay, thank you. I thought you had made a comment of B.
Oh, sorry.
You did. Okay, it's B, but it's C on our agenda.
Is it?
Yes.
The ordinance is C, the bond is B.
Right, so it's the series.
Yes, so C is 2025B.
The, the series, guys.
I can't claim anything on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we will have public comment regarding this specific ordinance.
Actually, I apologize. I have Oscar Gutierrez here to present some information regarding these bonds. Like I said, the preliminary determination process, in addition to the public hearings, we have to present certain fiscal information regarding the bonds, and Oscar's going to take it from here.
Okay.
Apologies for the discommunication.
Thank you for the record, Oscar Gutierrez, bond reconsoilment minister for advisor to the county. What do you, there should be a page labeled preliminary determination statutory information sheet that was made available to all the council members. This should also be available online. And rather than reading everything on there, I will just give the highlights if, should there be public comment. These bonds will be limited to no more than 20 years. The maximum allowed amount will be $23 million, but as Counselor Beaver mentioned, it could be less, but no more. The maximum rate that it could be, that these could be is 7%. Again, we expect that to be significantly lower because of the county's AAA credit. And, and while there is a tax rate calculation of what it would be equivalent to, because that is on today's assessed value, because we know that the value will be higher in 2026, we expect these to be tax rate neutral as well as the other set of bonds that is not, does not up for a public hearing, which would be the A's. With that out, if you have any questions, let me know. And if not, again, these are available on the packet online if the publisher have any questions.
Thank you. Now, is there any public comments regarding the, these bonds here, these ordinance? Seeing none, we move on. I'll close the public hearing, and we need to approve the minutes from the July 2025 meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next, we have public comments. Any other items do we have? Thank you. Approach the podium. Please state your name, your address, and you have three minutes to, to share your thoughts. And this is not a dialogue back and forth question. However, we're all available outside this meeting to answer any questions you might have of us individually. Thank you.
Okay. My name's Candy Ganzel. I live at 22711 Dunbar Road, Sheridan. I'm here to speak on behalf of the residents of Dunbar Road. We have serious concerns about the county council's decision tonight and their potential impact on our community. The interlocal agreement with Sheridan, which was on the agenda tonight, includes a multi-use path on Dunbar Road. This path would have a devastating effect on our properties, destroying homes, trees, and yards. As just one example, the path would require a removal of over 14 trees, 60 to 70 feet tall, from my husband is in my property alone. Our neighbors to the north, from 226 to 236, face the loss of at least 55 similar-sized trees, and the people south of me, to 38, over 200 trees that size, not including people's front yards. I, people walk by my, if the path goes in my yard, I literally could spit on people as they walk by. I lose the value of my home, a $900,000 home. Value's gone because the path is so close. We've been told repeatedly that the trail could be moved to the east side of 31. However, in a phone call in July 28th, two county commissioners told me that the agreement cannot be changed because Sheridan has already signed it. Plus, they believe that they would lose money on the state and federal money. My determination on the issue was even appointed discussion at the council's meeting that day. If this project proceeds, it will destroy the peace and serenity of Dunbar Road and the residents living adjacent to the path with experience of complete lack of privacy. The trail will render my house unsellable. Who wants to sit on the front porch and be able to reach out and touch someone walking on a path? In my efforts to find a solution, I contacted the Indiana Department of Transportation on Monday, July 28th at 2:00 a.m. I spoke with Kathy Eaton-McCallum, who provided two pieces of information, and I quote, "The county will not lose money if they do not put in a trail. The funding would not be adjusted." Two, federal transportation guidelines require a walking path to be contiguous or hooked into another walking path. This path would be a path to nowhere, nowhere on 236, nowhere on 38. My husband and I have spent 40 years building the home of our dreams in the town where I grew up. We cannot believe that we may not be able to live there in peace due to an unnecessary walking path. I implore you to help your citizens and respond by addressing this horrific issue. I have three questions for the council. What steps can the council and its legal council take to amend the agreement and remove the walking path? Was the petition signed by residents submitted to the county? We had almost 50 signatures. If so, when was it submitted? And how will the council work to resolve this matter to the satisfaction of the citizens of Dunbar?
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Thank you. Just please state your name and address.
My name is Jeff Beals. I live at 21645 Dunbar Road, Sheridan. And my sentiments echo what Candy said. We're not in favor of the walking path because it does come very, very close to many of our properties, and we've already had to withstand the approval and the building of this water park, which is going to be extremely invasive to our neighborhood with 500,000 potential visitors every year. And again, this, this trail, I don't understand why the trail is there for because, again, like Candy said, it's a trail to nowhere. It leads, it starts nowhere and leads nowhere. Why would we spend money doing something like that, invading our property, when it has no functionality? So again, I, what Candy said, she pretty much defined everything, but I just can't imagine why we would need such a trail. I can understand the expansion of the road, but I can't understand the need to put in a trail that would take up our property and serve no function, no purpose. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Blake Alexander, also a resident of Dunbar. I just want to echo the sentiments of, of the neighbors. We are adjusting to the, the loss of cornfields, you know, they can't stay forever. Corn in Hamilton County know that to be the case. But one of the concerns that I have as a parent with three kids out there, one of the challenges we faced in the 11 years I've lived at the property, there's, there is oftentimes this unspoken expectation that in the country, you can do what you want and get by with what you want. So over the years that we've been there, there has been lots of law enforcement because people coming out, riding up and down on the road, getting into trouble, causing all sorts of stuff. One of the concerns that I have for my property specifically as a, adjacent to this development, I, I want to speak about the walkpath as well, but adjacent to this water park development, the developers mentioned multiple times a desire to have either a hotel on the property or cabin such that whole sports teams could stay on the property. I look at it from the sense of, I've got teenagers, and if that park closes at 11 o'clock and there's nothing for them to do, the only thing out there available for them to stretch their legs and get into something would be that walkpath. So at 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock at night, the last thing we need is baseball teams and a bunch of kids having fun running up and down the street and causing a bunch of noise or potential problems. So again, to echo the sentiments of the neighbors, a walkpath to nowhere other than this small stretch of road with this development, to me, makes no sense. I guess my question to you all being, I know you can't answer back, we have posed our concerns to the Sheridan Town Council. We've been to all the meetings. We've expressed this. Last night at that meeting, they shared with us that they have asked for copies of the plan and the proposal, and they've not received anything, and they have not gotten documentation back as part of this interlocal agreement to give us any specifics as to who to address our concerns to, who to best represent this, this concern overall as a community. So I guess just a question for the group, I know you can't answer, who, who would we best be engaging with in terms of addressing our concerns so that the voices could be heard and potentially something could happen to impact what is going to be a detriment to all of our properties? Again, if we end up with a 10-foot walkpath, we're acquiring more property, we're disrupting trees, fences, gates, all of that, for, for my purposes, no intended benefit for anyone other than the people staying at that water park. So we're just asking you guys to consider what, what is discussed here this evening, and if, if there are answers to point us to the right people, we would all appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Good evening. Todd Hufford, 21415 Dunbar Road. Good to see a couple of familiar faces that I haven't seen in a while. This whole process has been interesting and educational for all of us, and it's probably a case study that'll be written about in relation to where this process started, of course, the reorganization and then how it's finishing. So it's been a little bit challenging just to find, you know, who to talk to and where to go. I'm sure that when the initial application was started, that the path was in there to begin with. So some of you may be saying, why are you complaining now? This has always been in the plan. It's been in there a long time. And there's been a lot of awareness, so that's probably good for citizens to become aware. But there's also a lot of talk these days about waste, fraud, and abuse. And I think waste, when we think about this path to nowhere, we understand things are changing. We can only change so much, but a path that really connects to nothing, walking paths are awesome in the right place. And you know what? A walking path there someday may actually be the most perfect thing, but probably not today. What we're hearing, though, is that everybody's saying their hands are tied. The, the county is saying, well, because it was already, I'm sorry, the, the town is saying, because the county already had it in place, and it was something that, that started months and years prior, that if we stop this now, the road will never get fixed for seven more years because the money, frankly, is not yours. It's not Sheridan's, it's the state's or federal. And so you kind of look at it that way and say, well, why are we wasting anybody's money? I know it's great to have that money in the community, but we're destroying a lot of things, much less the relationship with people. So it's really a struggle to try to figure out who's responsible, and I know that a lot of you might say, our hands are tied. My challenge to you guys is, don't, don't answer that way. Think about it. It's wasteful. It's a lot of money that nobody wants, nobody needs. It's going to be a road to nowhere, a path to nowhere for many years, probably a decade or longer. Find a way to work with whoever it is, whomever it is, at the state or federal level to say, we have to amend this. Do we need the road improved? Yeah, we do. Do we need the path? No, we don't. Thank you.
Pam Williams, 27515 LeMong Road, Sheridan, Indiana. I'm not actually on Dunbar, but I am here to talk about the Dunbar Road project. We have seen in North Hamilton County a complete disregard for what the residents are asking for. I understand that progress is coming and progress is important, and frankly, Dunbar Road does need redone. When, with the 31 upgrades, when we have accidents and the traffic is going to go into Dunbar because that's the most logical road, the somebody's are going to destroy it. We know it needs paved. But I want to echo what my other residents are saying is that the walkpath isn't necessary. So as I look at this from a perspective of money and a perspective of community and what our community is looking for, what I see and I read in documents is that the walkpath has not been slated for either side of the road yet, just that there's a walkpath. Yet our commissioners continue to say it's a done deal, but it's not a done deal. And you know why it's not a done deal? Because tonight, you have the opportunity to not approve the interlocal agreement, to send it back and to say, listen to your residents. So what I'm asking you, as a resident of Hamilton County tonight, is to send it back and tell the commissioners to listen to the people who live on that road and to amend it so that you can come, we can come to an agreement that works for everybody. Thank you.
Any other comments?
As a note, we will be discussing this later on the agenda, so if, even though we didn't necessarily answer your questions directly, there may be comments that of value if you, if you stick around.
Okay. Moving on, we will have committee officer reports, presidents. I have nothing to report other than there's so many things going on in our county, and we were, we are actively working on them, and there'll be a addition to the agenda that was originally published, but the recent published one. So next, vice presidents.
Nothing.
I have nothing further to report.
Highway.
We did not meet because I have on the agenda.
Finance.
No meeting.
Personnel.
We met, and they're on the agenda.
Major projects.
We did not meet.
And any miscellaneous?
I have one item, Madam President. I just want to acknowledge, so Hamilton County secured the sixth spot in the top 10 digital counties for our size, so Chris Mertens accepted that award, the national award in Philadelphia earlier in July, so I just want to commend you and the team, and we continue to be proud of our technological advances, so.
Do a great job. Any other comments? Okay, next, seeing no unfinished business or tabled business, we are moving on to new business. Do I have a motion to approve vendor claims?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next, a motion to approve the 2026 county meeting dates and deadlines. You have in your packet the dates for next year.
So moved. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next, the Hamilton County Police Benefit Plan amendments. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
I have a question.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I understand why, what's the reason for the change, moving into the mayor board?
Yeah, so a couple of years ago, this body made, approved some changes to this benefit plan. Any changes to the plan have to be made by the mayor board, the sheriff, and the county council. After those amendments were made, we went through a process and we talked to some other counties. This is a change that has been made throughout the state, but essentially, when a benefit is awarded to a deputy, it doesn't always make sense that it would be at the same time that the insurance benefit is awarded. It might be at a time before or after, or there are also cases where the insurance benefit might not be awarded because of the terms of that insurance policy, but this would just clarify the language so that it's not tied to that insurance benefit.
We're not reacting to a particular situation? This is just standardized from?
Not necessarily. It's clarifying some things, and again, something that's been done across the state. It has zero financial impact, but it is a requirement that this bond be proved.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? On favor?
Aye.
Next is the sheriff's commissary, commissary report for the first half of 2025. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next is Resolution CC 0806 2025-01, a resolution of the Hamilton County Council recommending the 2025 property tax levy for taxing units.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next is Resolution Zero, CC 06, excuse me, CC 0806 2025 dot two, a resolution concerning the purchase of real estate for the 146th Street and Hazel Dell Parkway intersection project. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Next is an interlocal agreement concerning road projects between Hamilton County and Sheridan. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second for discussion.
For discussion, yeah.
Discussion.
I have some questions. So thank you again to those that spoke, and Brad, I'm not sure, Mr. Davis, I think these questions are going to potentially come to you.
Yeah, you'll be the best person to answer for no reason.
Um, in our, in our, in our local documents that were provided, we are missing exhibit information, so when things are, or even Connor, thank you, when they talk about project phase one, we have no depiction to go off of, other than memory of what it potentially looks like if we know where their homes are. That's one question. Second question is, can this be tabled for future discussion? Should we see that as a necessary action? Third question, I'm just going to keep firing them, can the plan be changed to adjust the pathway not being included? Because I do believe there needs to be improvements to Dunbar overall. If there's a merriment of potentially the pathway, is that an option? Can we go back to NDOT? What are our options overall there?
Yes, thank you. I, so for the first question, the exhibits, I apologize. When it was sent over, I, I, it should have had a map, and the exhibit itself is just Dunbar Road highlighted from 216 to 226, then Exhibit B is 226 to 236. Brad, if you don't mind correcting if I'm wrong, but there has been, there are no plans at this point in time because we've had to put this project on pause due to the reorganization since it is a road that is no longer in our jurisdiction. So there are no plans to put in there. If you look at the actual interlocal agreement, it doesn't mention walkpath, it doesn't mention any of that stuff, it just says that a project that will be designed, designed, constructed, inspected, securing funding for, carrying out the Dunbar Road project for maintenance, security, and operation of Dunbar Road, and then the eventual pass, transfer of the ownership of the road to Sheridan. So it is a very, very, very high-level point of where we are with this project. There are no, I, I know that there's been an engineering firm hired by the county. This was, again, prior to the reorganization, and they were at the very highest level going through, I think, the environmental studies and some other things at that point in time. The, so again, the exhibit has it right here. It's, all it is is the road highlighted.
Okay.
There is nothing, there is no plan at this point in time.
Okay.
So that, I apologize on that, that that's something the council would like to table for, I completely understand. The second question I apologize was.
It was related to tabling, so the assumption would be, it could be, obviously with the reorg, some things shifted here, right? So.
Yeah, so I, I guess we may answer the third question first real quick, because that was about whether you can change the plans. I do not know. I, I think we were under the impression that NDOT or MPO, whoever's given us money, that that was part of your application, you were, your award was based on what you apply or sent in. If, if it is correct that NDOT or MPO, whoever's the one providing this funding is saying that we can change it, I, Brad, I assume that they would, we would gladly have that conversation.
Did we ask for the path when we apply? I mean, what, what's the specificity?
The path was included in the application.
Generally, I mean, you know, I let Brad kind of speak into this, but this is so early in the process, and our design is typically just a, this is the type of road that it is by classification, and so it's this wide. And I guess the question I would ask to that, and maybe Brad can answer this, is can we amend the applications you say that, that we agreed that the right of way needs to be acquired, but the path does not need to be built at this time? So if you got a couple of questions there.
Well, yeah. Is it going to be our call to do a path, or is this really Sheridan's at this point?
Right. And have they appreciated?
It seems strange to me, it's not our area, it's not our road now, so we have to finish what we said we'd do, but is it going to be Sheridan that decides whether they have a path or not? I'm a little confused.
I'm sorry, there's no representative from Sheridan County Council here, so I'm just waiting for them.
No.
Pam, this is, this is questions are to our, to our attorney and the staff.
Thanks, sir. You're asking questions that can't be answered.
Well, we're asking them.
We'll let them answer.
Well, if it can't be answered, then maybe we should table it.
Yeah, and I don't know about them.
Do I have a second?
I'd like to.
I, second.
We haven't heard their answer yet.
Let's, let's, that's fine. We'll pause on that then, Steve. What's the answer?
I'm not quite sure I know the question, but the application that was submitted for this road, it did include the pathway. The federal funds that were awarded to us included building the pathway, or trail, whatever you want to call it. We are into the design of the first phase of the project. The trail is intended to go on the east side of the road. How it affects the property owners is yet really to be totally determined because we're not even that far into the design yet. So, you know, there can be adjustments made to try to avoid some of the trees. That's, all has to be determined as we get into the design, phase two of it, the design hasn't even started yet. So, you know, and the intent was to build the path. We're building a lot of paths and trails all over the place, they're very popular. If you're going to have a water park and hotel, it seems kind of logical that people would have a safe place to walk. But whether the trail can be taken out or not would have to be a discussion, I think, between us and the state of Indiana, whether they would honor that or not.
So we are still involved because the road, it's, I mean, since we applied prior to the reorg, since it's not technically our road anymore, we're involved as a courtesy or requirement? I guess, help me understand that, so.
After Sheridan adopted and voted and approved on the reorganization, the, all roads within, out of township are under their authority and jurisdiction. The county is not, is not, is not required to construct or maintain any of the roads going forward. However, the commissioners thought during the process for it, this is one that we did secure this state, our federal funding through the state, that with 31 access and everything being closed, that, you know, certain, the interchange is, was it, I can't remember which ones are, that interchange, the interchange is being closed. The idea was they wanted to enhance Dunbar for public safety issue so that the road can be, it's going to be used more as the interchange is closed down, cul-de-sacs or bridges over, but it's no longer going to be, you're going to be able to turn left or right at all 31 from all, again, I think, 216, you should be able to, 236 is an overpass. Like 256 and 66 are either cul-de-sac or a road, a bridge over.
Why is it overpass?
And so it, from a public safety standpoint, Dunbar will be used, the volume will increase tremendously, so the commissioners said that, hey, we've, we've secured funding, we So the commissioner said that, hey, we've, we've secured funding. We will gladly move forward with that at this point in time, not because we have to. I mean, the commissioners, I don't know how their, their thought would be as to whether we move forward or not. Again, the funding was secured by the highway. And, you know, I think, honestly, I think we, I know Brad mentioned that the trail or walkway was on one side. The only reason the commissioners even agreed to move to their side was, I think, at the request of the town of Sheridan. So I-
Has Sheridan voted on this?
They've already approved the-
So they approved it. Okay. I mean-
When I talked with Ms. Ganzel six, eight weeks ago, and then talked with Commissioner Raderbrand, it was gonna be moved to the other side of the road. What happened to that?
No, it has. Now, that's what Brad's saying. It was on, whatever, was it the east side or the west side? It was on the west side.
Away from the properties. I thought it was gonna go across the street.
Yeah.
The-
The pathway.
The pathway is currently planned to be on the east side of the road.
What was it planned on the west side originally?
We have looked at it to be on the west side of the road. There wasn't a commitment to either side of the road, really.
And the homes are predominantly on the west side or the east side?
It's both, really, but I think the least impactful is the path on the east side.
On the east side.
I believe so.
Yeah, I've been looking at the map and... Another question I have is the path, they stated the path to nowhere, and I know in, in good planning is that you plan for the future and you make developers and install paths, and when you're doing a project, you install path whenever possible to connect them in the future at some point. Is that the reason for the path here is just in, being proactive for the growth in the area? Or is there, or do you know of plans of other paths that are coming, coming up that will be connecting to that?
The, it's largely proactive, knowing that that's a growth area and what's happening up in that area. So, and we can build it now with 80 cents being funded by the federal government. Makes a big difference, too. So, our intent had the, the area remained, the county's jurisdiction would then to try to improve all of Dunbar Road, all the way up to 276th Street. Whether all that would have had path or not would yet to be determined, but probably so because, again, we're trying to be proactive and knowing that that corridor up there would see some type of development along the US 31 corridor. So, kind of makes sense that if you can build it and get a lot of it paid for. Otherwise, go ahead and build it. And it, in our viewpoint, it was a benefit to the residents themselves as well. People like to ride, ride their bikes and walk and, you know, when we put the path on 236th Street, West of Cicero, I didn't think there'd be a lot of use, but there seems to be a lot of use. And it's kind of a rural area, but there are people that anymore like to use those paths for exercise and recreation. So, we thought it was a good idea to have the path.
To my question earlier, we make commitments to engineering drawings with the state on these projects as, as we have to modify things for, things to happen in the field, right? Is there anything that would be, is there any previous project where we've amended something like this where the right of way is, is secured, but we don't build an aspect of projects?
Nothing comes to mind, Ken, that we did that with. The right of way, yeah, I'm not, nothing's come into mind that we did that.
So every time you secure right of way, you build all infrastructure in that area?
That's the intent, yes. We usually don't buy the right of way unless we have the project to use it.
Especially when federal funds are funded.
I, I understand the value of it, but I mean, from my perspective, the county, we're, we're looking at this and saying, we need the road there because it's good for commerce. It helps our, our community of businesses and people get through there safely. The, the path is a Sheridan path at this point because they took ownership of that ground. And again, it's not really within our jurisdiction to even like manage it or monitor it. I, I don't know if this is even my, our fight. This is really a fight to get the road in. And I know, and I know that we can modify drawings, but if, if Hamilton County and Sheridan, if the commissioners in Sheridan agree to go, go to Kathy, who runs the MPO, and say, let's go after this and let them do that, but I don't, I don't see why we'd stand a way of moving forward with the design part.
Any more questions, Karen?
We, I was just gonna say, if we table it, I, I don't, I hate to kill Dunbar Road getting fixed, but I feel like this falls on Sheridan now. Like, and if we have to, I mean, if we kill it tonight and then you guys don't get Dunbar Road done at all, or then it's on Sheridan to do it, that, that also could be a shame. So I feel like, I mean, whether we table this, and then that way we can find out. I mean, did Sheridan okay this in our local with the path? And did they do that after? How, how shortly ago did they do that?
I think they approved it sometime between now and the last 30 days or so. And there, when they approved it, they had the idea that, the county's idea was that we apply, our application for funding had the pathway, walkway in it. They knew that. They voted for it still and approved it. Again, if there is the ability to have that conversation, I have no doubt Brad and the commissioners would entertain that conversation with NDOT, but that is just not our say, but that doesn't mean that they're-
So if we say, okay, we want to table it, or we don't want the path, what will happen? You have to walk me, walk us through what is gonna be the next steps on behalf of the Sher, town of Sheridan and the, and the highway department? Because there's not an interlocal agreement.
If there's not an interlocal agreement, then the project's probably dead. And the roadway portion of it is dead. Because the money that was awarded to us is awarded to us. It wasn't awarded to anybody else. So it is our responsibility, if we move forward, to do the project. Whether the trail or the path is included in that or not, we can explore that to see if it jeopardizes the funding or not if it is not in there.
Is it time sensitive? Is there anything driving the time where we have to pass the interlocal tonight?
Only that the clock is ticking in terms of when the window of the funding is available, and we're already behind because of all the delays to get to this point.
Are we at risk of losing the funding if we?
Not, not right now at this point, no.
So if, if next month could still be possible, that you keep all the funding going?
But that's getting them the-
To, to my mind, we will know nothing more next month than we do this month.
Unless there's an opportunity to, to determine with NDOT if the, not having the pathway kills the deal. So that the road, that continues on, that's-
Can you get that question answered in a month, Brad?
I, we can certainly try.
Will design be far enough along where you can see if it impacts the residents?
Not, not on the-
No.
I mean, honestly, it's not really our determination. Like, we can see if we can change it, and we find out if we can. And then to me, it's, in the next 30 days, Sheridan and their residents, or Adams Township, since they took control, they need to say, if it says they can change, then their representatives need to say, take it out. And if their representatives say, put it in, we have the interlocal, we probably need to then listen to them. But that's where I'd say it falls on-
It's Sheridan.
They, they wanted the, this, this is kind of like, when they reorg, I think it falls on them to make that decision.
Yeah, but it's a county project.
It's a county project. We will own it. It's up to our standards, which are the highest in the county.
Right. If, if we don't do it, it won't, the likelihood of getting done-
It's not gonna get done. Well, no, no, I, I understand that. I'm not saying we don't do the road. I'm saying if Sheridan wants us, if we find out we can take the path out. But it's up to Sheridan to decide whether they want us to or not. But otherwise, we-
No, it's still up to us because it's, it's technically still a county project.
We have a motion to table.
Well, it's supersede.
Let me, let me do this. A, a, a table, a, a motion to table supersedes. So I'll motion that we table it for one month, see if Brad can get a yes or no. Can we leave out the trail, and we'll take it up next month.
Right.
Yep.
Second, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
See what you can find out, Brad.
Thank you, Brad.
Thanks, Brad. Thanks, Connor.
Next is ordinance CC 0806 2025 dot A, appropriation ordinance of Hamilton County, Indiana. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is ordinance CC 0806 2025 dot B, an ordinance of Hamilton County, Indiana, authorizing conditions of general obligation by-
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Resolution CC 0806 2025 dot three, resolution of the Hamilton County Council pledging and assigning certain general revenues of Hamilton County to secure payments under a proposed lease.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Resolution CC 0806 2025 dot four, resolution of Hamilton County Council approving the form and execution released in among Hamilton County Hospital Association.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I'd like to open the public hearing for concerning additional appropriations. The first item under that agenda is Fund 1,001. County General requesting 1,957,000. Amount available for appropriation is 51, over 51 million. Do I have a motion? Or the first item is Assessor 144 amendment. Do I have a motion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, the Commissioner's Office 144 amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is reduction, is the reduction of 7,596,108 dollars and 31 cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Little discussion.
Oh, that's-
That's it.
Reduction.
Yeah, it's a reduction, and this is for the food and beverage tax.
Food and beverage tax.
So we, the state now has to, we have to account for it separately, so it's not, I mean, it's a reduction out of one budget, but it's being moved.
To the other.
Yeah.
And so the Auditor's Department has done a yeoman's job to get this stuff turned around and moved into the right bucket. But they, if you read your notes, it talks about it coming out of the insurance fund.
Yes.
So coming out of that fund to go back into food and beverage and accounted for separately from this point forward.
Thank you.
Next is-
Nope, we need to vote.
Do we do vote?
We need to vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All votes passes. Next is Bill, Court Administration 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is Buildings and Grounds Additional Appropriation for $400,000.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, for ISSD, there's a 144 amendment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is additional appropriation of $57,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is transfer of $369,680,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is Emergency Management of 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Prosecutor 144 amendment.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Sheriff 144 amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Prosecutor 144 amendment.
No.
Oh, I'm so-
We're down to P.
No, I'm so, so sorry. Did I skip?
No, you just-
Okay, it's okay. Fund 1023 Airport Authority Transfer of $2.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Fund 1025 Airport Authority Requesting Additional Appropriation of $137,237.
So moved on the additional?
And then the amount of, the additional appropriation, do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I motioned to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Question?
Yes.
The amount on the sheet says 297. The amount on the agenda says 237.
No, mine shows 297 and 297.
Mine says 137.
No, 137, 297, under the appropriation, don't read that top line. Go down to item one. It matches the 297, 297.
The one on the heading for C says 237. It's different than the one showing on at 297.
But they corrected it at the one, yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
So it's the 297 or it's the 237?
It's the 297 based on the form that was submitted as well.
I'm good.
Clarify, it's 100, it's, let me make sure, 297.
I made a motion for 137.
The additional amount of appropriation is $137,137,000.
And that's what you motioned to?
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay. We have an all in favor?
I'll second. We have it.
Okay.
Yeah, we did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is transfer of $285,045,17.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next is the Fund 1026 Sheridan Airport Additional Appropriation of $285,045,17.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Fund 10, 1157 Food and Beverage Tax Additional Appropriation of 7,596,108,31 is connected to the previous comment.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Fund 1159 Health Department Transfer of $40,000.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Fund 1171 Major Bridge Transfer of $504,585.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Fund 1176 dot, 1173 Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Transfer of $693,389,40. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Park and Recreation Additional Appropriation of 1,500,000. And the amount available is 3,560,933,84.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Fund 1, 2, 1222 Communications 144 amendment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Fund 4807 Non-Reverting Computer Maintenance Requesting Additional Appropriation of $187,725.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Grant Appropriation Reductions and Transfers.
I'll make a motion that we lump together one through two.
Second, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve what this is?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now, closing the public hearing, we are, do I have any comments from the sheriff?
No, ma'am.
From the council attorney?
No, ma'am.
From our auditor.
Actually, yes. So I have, sorry. I have two ordinances to present to you for your review and approval. The first of which is ordinance CC 0806 2025 point D. And this is an ordinance, a prepayment ordinance. We have services out at the Sheridan Airport that need to continue. And by state statute, we can't prepay for services that haven't been rendered yet. This allows us to do that with the lady that's out there that, that cleans the-
Right.
Do we call it a terminal?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a terminal.
Okay.
So you just need a motion to approve the ordinance?
Absolutely.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Rader, can, can we use that for other services also? It would be like MOU?
You'd have to ask someone smarter than me, and he's sitting right there in the picture.
What was the question I'm saying? Can we use it for other services? We're gonna, we're passing this ordinance to have a memorandum of understanding with a person to provide services for?
Yes.
Could we do that for-
You can. There are certain restrictions and stuff on it, but generally, yes.
Lawn mowing?
Yes.
Door repair, whatnot like that?
Yes.
Even though it says janitorial services in the title, it can still be-
Oh, you mean this exact ordinance or in general?
No, no, just the ord-
Basically saying that can be duplicated for other-
Yeah, for other services.
Yeah, you could. I mean, I write them very narrow to only the service that you're trying to authorize it for, but yeah, there, you could-
So we need an ordinance for every service?
If you're prepaying.
Oh, okay.
Yes, you can. If they're, if you're paying before they submit an invoice to the auditor.
But if it's after?
No, that didn't-
Then we're good.
Okay, I understand.
Then it's just a regular- And I always put a limit on it, like, you're 50 thou, it's way below that, but I always put a limit just to make sure that it won't go too far into that.
Right, I got you.
The second ordinance, ordinance number CC 0806 2025 point E. This is an ordinance which we need your approval for so that departments can create bank accounts to take credit card fees for payments of expenses that they have. This will, this is outside of the county general fund, so they will be setting it up separately. And then there are certain statutes that we have to sweep that money back into the county general for given days. But this, this allows them to, each department to set up their own bank account.
I think this is well overdue. I, I make a motion to accept it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
This solves a problem that we talked about?
It does.
Okay.
Aye.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Kathy uses a Pega, check that. Kathy uses a Pega.
You should get one of those. You totally should, man. She's wrong.
Are the new ordinances that we just passed in there? You know, just looking out where I can.
Fines and all that stuff.
Oh, you know what? One we need out of here, though?
If you can jump onto that.
Which we don't want to sign, is the one that we tabled. I don't know if it's that one, I'm just going to hand you the large ones. Perfect. Hey, you know, I try.
I'm thirsty.
I know, I know.
And that was 100% the right one, right?
Listen, I'm going to need an executive summary on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was trying to keep them nice and...
The thing along the line, it's not a problem. And you figured out which one we're tabling?
I already put it, pulled it out.
So, it's out of the sack?
Correct, it's not in the sack.
I can't believe you still do this. Why are we still generating...
Okay.
You gotta find your budget, like, you know, it's still print those.
Again, I think the big part, well, and so I think, I think that makes, I mean, that makes this hard, right? Because I, I think as you guys attest, I mean, you know things are in the, right? There's changes happening. We don't control the park, the water pump that's coming in there. I mean, but I think if there is something to be done with the trail, with the progress Well, and in fairness, I think they kind of assess the fact that we, we don't know what the plan is going to look like. And I think, you feel like you do, even though we don't? Yeah, and we don't either. I think that's the big part that I took away from this. So, let me ask you this one question. Obviously, the situation is out of our control, the reorg that happens, right? People want the road done. What happened? Because I, I think a bunch of our district are tasked, we're not going to get this if we don't potentially go this route. So, what do you do?
That is?
Groovy, that's it.
I mean, I probably would have done it, right? I probably would have done 236, and I think we're going to be tied, and I think, oh, obviously we're going to be tied. I'll watch the YouTube, it'll help us, I think if we work somewhere, we will, there's something important. Yeah? And I hope we don't have to see, right? So, it's only a chance. I think I will watch the YouTube, we'll see what happens with the traffic. We, we get some sort of response, I'll let you know. I think, my guess would be, though, if we find out, and if that says no, then we're probably going to lose. I mean, that, you have to ask the question. And I, I'm sorry that you didn't get that, because that's our job. Just the same as I said, I knew that it was a dot, not a map, so... Yeah, absolutely, that's... Sure. And we're happy to have the interaction, I think.
Well, that's why I want to come down and kind of, to me, like, it's a good deal is that, like, a health action, I think, you know, I see, maybe it's passing, and maybe they're not.
Essentially, they don't, so big picture, right? So, they're, they're asking, you know, if I...
Well, that's what I want, that's what I want.
Can you send to them as well? Tim.
That's why I want to...
No, you don't, you don't.
You're right.
We have a way to pay.
But, as I come on, they...
I can't do it. Yeah, no, we need to do it. The only thing she's worried about is if you do the general fund. You have to call back, but...[1691.87]